You took my love, but now you're gone. Since I fell for you. Love brings such misery and pain. I think I'll never be the same. And that's since I fell for you. But it's too bad and it's too sad. I'm in love with you. First you loved me, then you snubbed me. But what can I do? I'm still in love with you. Oh, I guess I... I'll never see the light. I get the blues every night. Since I fell for you. You, oh, you. When it's too bad and it's far too sad. But I'm in love with you. First you loved me, then you snubbed me. What more can I do? Because I'm so in love with you. I guess I, I guess I... I'll never see the light. Because you got me getting the blues every night. Darling, since I fell, darling, since I fell. Darling, since I fell for you. What am I supposed to do? Since I fell for you. You made me love you, baby. Since I, since I fell. You made me leave my happy home. You took my love, you took my love, but now you're gone.
Now reconvene the city council meeting of Tuesday, September 20th, 2016. Welcome, everybody. Thank you for coming out this evening. Mr. Munoz, do we have anything to report from closed session?
Mr. Mayor, we have no reportable items this evening.
Thank you. Mayor Potemek Sorik will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance this evening.
Please rise, face the colors. Place your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands and makes it under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You'll remain standing. This evening's invocation will be delivered by Orange County Fire Authority Chaplain Jeff Hertzel.
Hi, everyone. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A lot of me to give thanks for us. God, thank you for the rain today. It's really refreshing. Thank you for the great city of Dana Point, a place that may have us call home, but all of us call beautiful and really the garden spot of Southern California. We thank you for this great city and its fine leaders. Would you bless the men and women that lead us with the time that they invested to serve us as our leaders? We thank you for the greatest country on earth, the United States of America. It's in your powerful name I pray. Amen.
Okay, moving on to the Presentations and Proclamations section of this science meeting. Business of the Month is the Schwac Beach Grill. Rachel Johnson, can you please give us a presentation on that? Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Tomlinson and members of the council. I am pleased to announce the Business of the Month for September 2016, Schwac Beach Grill. Tonight, we are joined by the owner Max Fisher and his manager Devon Sinner. The vision of Schwac Beach Grill began in 2009 as Max was a contractor working on a job in Newport Beach. Growing up in Dana Point and graduating from Dana Hills High School, he noticed there wasn't a quick-serve family burger joint where you would be able to grab a burger and a beer. Every day, as he was thinking about this, Max would drive past a vacant storefront that used to house a Starbucks on the corner of Amber Lantern and Del Prado. Growing up around the restaurant business, Max was sure he had the right combination for success. After months of preparation and construction, Schwac opened in June of 2011. After opening in 2011, the popularity of Schwac grew so quickly that in five years, they have expanded a few times, growing from the initial 1180 square feet to 1,400 square feet plus a large outdoor dining area. And they just opened a second location called Schwac Cantina in San Clemente. The family-friendly atmosphere and the ability to dine in or take out has their patrons coming back for more. Schwac finds their success because of their great price-to-value ratio, giving the opportunity for patrons, especially families, to come eat at least two times a week and not break the bank, but also have really good, high-quality food. Being able to bring the quick-serve restaurant the Lantern District needed, Schwac has become the family favorite Max hoped it would be. Even the comedian Adam Sandler has been spotted eating there. Schwac has received many awards, including the Golden Lantern Award for Best Burger, the Best Chicken Sandwich in Orange County, as well as a Beautification Award from the Dana Point Chamber for their beautiful patio renovations. Being part of and giving back to the community is important to Schwac, as they are involved in and sponsor three charity golf tournaments, including supporting muscular dystrophy, in which they have helped to raise almost $1 million. They also support the Wounded Warriors, Dana Hills High School, giving burger cards to every graduating senior that attends grad night, and supporting the most recent events that have been held in the Lantern District, such as the Art Walk, and has become a sponsor for the car show. On behalf of the city council, we would like to congratulate you for being selected as Business of the Month for September, and we wish you many more years of continued success.
Mr. Fisher, if you'd come up to the front here, we'd like to present you with a certificate, and you can please bring your family and Congratulations. You have a great restaurant, and thank you for putting up the sign that says commemoration of your five-year anniversary here in town. It was a very nice touch I saw today. So, your place is always busy. Sometimes it's so busy that there's a huge line out front, and sometimes we won't stop, but you do a great job. So, on behalf of the city council and myself, we'd like to present you with a certificate of recognition. It says the Schwac Beach Grill, Featured Business of the Month, September 2016. The city of Dana Point takes great pressure in presenting the Schwac Beach Grill located on Del Prado in Dana Point, and extends our congratulations on being named Dana Point Featured Business of the Month by myself and on behalf of the entire city council and city of Dana Point. Please accept this.
Sure. Thank you very much. We really appreciate it. We continue to strive to better our business and make it more fun for families in Dana Point. Appreciate it.
Thank you so much.
Okay, well, great job, guys. Thank you. Can't leave without getting a city council.
Oh, cool.
And we also have a presentation by Heather Johnson, the chamber.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to start off with saying thank you to the city council for always representing our businesses here in town, for recognizing them when they do something special, and just for being great Dana Point businesses. Max, when he first came and joined the chamber, he said, "I don't know if you want me to join the chamber, because when I get involved with something, I get really involved with something." And that almost sounded like a threat, but it actually has been something that's been really great. So, not only did Devon and Max, they have been forefront through all the construction on Del Prado, they've been helping with the new events on Lantern District, as well as the Montessori school was having some issues, and they immediately jumped in as soon as they heard that they were having some hardships. They jumped in and created a promotion that helps raise some funds for them. They're just really the kind of businesses that epitomize Dana Point and the heart of Dana Point, and thank you for being a part of the chamber and thank you for being part of the community.
Okay, next item is Employee of the Month, Shawn Nichols. Ursula, would you give a few words about Shawn here?
Yes, first I'd like to thank the mayor and the city council for giving me this opportunity to recognize Shawn. So Shawn has joined our team within somewhat recently. He took a senior planner position, which was vacant, and he has really hit the ground running. It has been such a pleasure to work with Shawn, his hard work ethic, his dedication. He is really doing the job of more than one person, and we really appreciate it, because we have a couple vacancies right now. I just am really looking forward to the continued success and working relationship and the continued dedication. He resides here in Dana Point as well, and so we're very grateful to have him on our team and his dedication to serving this community. Thank you so much, Shawn.
Okay, we have a certificate here that reads Shawn Nichols, Employee of the Month, September 2016. Whereas Shawn Nichols was hired by the city on June 1st, 2016, as a senior planner in the Community Department Development Department, and whereas Shawn's professionalism, dedication, insightfulness, and attention to detail are attributes that benefit the city of Dana Point as he fulfills his role as senior planner. Whereas Shawn has taken over the project management of many complex development applications and advanced planning projects, requiring an ability to be innovative while maintaining the integrity and vision that the city council has set regarding the built physical environment of Dana Point. His ability to apply his technical knowledge and skill is an asset to the city, and whereas Shawn has assumed the role of managing and updating the division's project tracking software, which has resulted in increased efficiency and a higher level of customer service. And whereas Shawn's willingness to focus on solutions while striving to maintain the highest quality private development exemplifies the city's commitment to providing five-star service to its customers. Now therefore, on behalf of myself and the entire Dana Point City Council, Shawn Nichols, upon your selection of Dana Point Employee of the Month for September 2016, and express our heartfelt appreciation for your devoted service to the citizens of Dana Point, and express our sincere thanks for this exemplary service to your community. About your family, or any guests that you have? Introduce them.
Absolutely. So, first though quickly, I'd just like to say thank you so much. I'm very humbled by this, and I don't think this would have been possible. In fact, I know it wouldn't have been possible without the support of everyone on staff. It's been just wonderful, and it's a joy every day to come to work and work with such great people. So, just thank you to everyone. We'll strive every day to continue to make Dana Point great. And here today with my wife and my son Greg, and my wife Amber and my son Greg and my daughter Gwen.
And I'd like to ask Mayor Brodomir, and we have another guest here, Sharon Lawler, to please come on up.
Yeah, you're right.
Pleasure to meet you. Thank you. Okay, this proclamation says, "Constitution Week is September 17th to 23rd of 2016. The Constitution of the United States of America, the guardian of our liberties, embodies the principles of limited government in a republic dedicated to rule by law. And whereas on September 17th, 2016, marks the 229th anniversary of the signing of the Constitution of the United States of America, and whereas it is fitting and proper to accord official recognition to this memorable anniversary and to the patriotic exercises that will commemorate the occasion. And whereas public law in 1950 guarantees issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America, designating September 17th through the 23rd as Constitution Week. Now therefore, on behalf of myself and the entire city council, do hereby proclaim the week of September 17th through the 23rd, 2016, as Constitution Week in the city of Dana Point, and urge all citizens to affirm the ideals of the framers of the Constitution had in 1787 by diligently protecting the freedoms guaranteed to us through this guarding of our liberties, remembering that lost rights may never be regained."
Yeah, he said most of it. In 1955, President Dwight Eisenhower proclaimed the 17th through the 23rd of September U.S. Constitution Week and asked that proclamations be given. He also ordered that all public school students, K through 12, be taught about the Constitution during this week. So if you have children in public school, find out whether they're learning about it. I taught for many, many years, and I challenged my fifth graders to memorize the preamble. So, I'm going to, I'm going to read it to make sure I'm right, but please join in, because I bet a lot of you, too, learned the preamble to the Constitution. All right, ready? "We, the people of the United States, in order to form a more perfect union, establish justice, ensure domestic tranquility, provide for the common defense, promote the general welfare, and secure the blessings of liberty to ourselves and our posterity, do ordain and establish the Constitution for the United States of America." Good, I hear the... I heard you guys doing it. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you for all you guys do.
............................................................................................................................................................
Okay, we have one more presentation this evening, and that's the Lantern District Public Art Competition. The Lantern District Art Walk was held on May 15th in order to enhance public art in the community. The city introduced Rain Tree Development to Dana Hills High School to consider incorporating art into the construction screen wall around the property perimeter. Rain Tree enthusiastically partnered with DHHS and sponsored a public art competition focused on two themes. The first, lanterns in the Latin district, and two, faces of Dana Point. Twenty-four finalists were selected from over 100 submittals. The art of 24 finalists was displayed on the project, sitting along PCH, and the public was encouraged to vote for their favorite piece. The three winners are here this evening to be recognized with the following high school students with their parents and the principal, Jason Allman, Visual Performing Arts Department Chair Natalie Herber, did I pronounce that right? Rebar. And our colleague Krista Snow, teacher of multimedia design. First of all, I have to ask, do you guys know who came in first, second, and third yet? Oh, you already know, so there's no surprise here. So first place, we have Madison Conrad. And we have a certificate here that says Madison Conrad, Certificate of Recognition, Lantern District Public Art Competition, presented by the city council of the city of Dana Point, and recognition of your being first place in the Lantern District Art Competition. Congratulations. Would you like to say a few words?
Thank you.
Okay, that's it? All right, second, our first runner-up was Hannah Scott. Hello, Hannah. We also have a certificate of recognition for you, presented by the city council of the city of Dana Point, and recognition of your being awarded first runner-up in the Lantern District Art Competition. Would you like to say a few words? And last but not least, Costa Papas?
Costa.
Costa, okay. Sorry about that. This also is a certificate of recognition, presented by the city council of the city of Dana Point, and recognition of your being awarded second runner-up in the Lantern District Public Art Competition. Would you like to say a few words?
Thank you so much for this opportunity. I really appreciate it, and thank you for supporting me on my arts path.
Mr. Principal, do you have anything to say?
As always, I'm so appreciative to be not only a resident, but a resident of the
As always, I'm so appreciative to be not only a resident but an employee of the Capistrano Unified School District within the city of Dana Point, and we all appreciate on behalf of the teachers, not just here this evening, but our staff in general, the support of the city of Dana Point. You have no idea how valued the support that you offer in a variety of ways is, and we appreciate it. Thank you very much.
How about the Visual Performing Arts Chair, Natalie? Teachers, who would, okay, there you go.
Hi, I ditto what he said. It's been such an awesome experience. The kids were so excited about this project. We had well over 100 students participate and thank you so much for the opportunities. We have some new projects we'll be working on with the city and really looking forward to it. So thank you.[658.29][658.29](applause). I'll be quick, but we really appreciate this. As you know, we have very talented students at Dana Hills, and it means a lot to them that the community appreciates their art, values the efforts that they're putting into it, and gives them opportunities like this to display their work in public. So thank you, everybody, for the opportunity on behalf of the students and our school.
All right, well, thank you for coming out this evening. All right, moving on to the consent calendar. We'll take a few photos and then, thank you.
(inaudible).
All matters listed under consent calendar are considered to be routine and will all be enacted by one roll call vote. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless members of the City Council, the public, or staff request specific items to be removed from the consent calendar for separate action. Are there any items to be removed by staff?
Not this evening, but I believe Mr. Munoz has an item relative to number two, I think it is.
I would like to make a clarification for the minutes. The agenda title says it's the regular meeting minutes for August 16th, 2016, and that's just a typographical area. It should say regular meeting minutes for September 6th, 2016. The materials that were included and posted online last week reflect that it's actually September 6th.
Okay, do we have to take any further action other than noting your changes? Okay.
We should probably correct that on the agenda board.
Thank you, Mr. Munoz. Any by the public?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Is it too late to pull something?
He's given me a public comment, but not an item.
Oh, sir, did you want to speak under public comments or under one of the items here?
I hadn't seen the Doheeny Village plan update, nor had I, nor had I seen the activities with the Doheeny Village connectivity. So I was hoping those would be brought forward.
Okay, well, what, could you fill out a speaker request after you?
Mayor Tomlinson, if I could.
They're trying to be pulled. I can't believe they're not.
He hadn't seen the report, so would I, Mike, give Mr. Gardner a copy of the report? And then, Mr. Gardner, since you've filled out a speaker slip, if there's anything you'd like to say to the council during public comments, you can do it at that time.
All right. Okay.
Okay, any from council members? Okay, go ahead, Mr. Miller.
I'd like to pull eight, 10, 12, and 13, please.
See what we've got here. Any other members, council members pulling?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, if we're pulling 10, I think we should pull 14 as well. I think it's related.
I have eight, 10, 12, 13, and 14. Okay, so let's proceed.
I would move the balance of the consent calendar subject to the revision suggested by the city attorney earlier.
Thank you. It's been regularly moved and seconded, please cast your ballot. The motion carries five to zero. Mr. Shaw Kevries, any staff report, please?
Yes, I'd like to ask Mr. Kilibr to provide an overview at this time.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, this is our annual rollover report from year one to year two of our current two-year budget. We finished last fiscal year, which was June 30, 2016, a couple of months ago, with an ending fund balance in the general fund of $20.1 million, with, that includes fully funded reserves. And actually, on the first day of the current fiscal year that started July 1, 2016, we were able to add, per council policy as well, over a quarter million dollars to those reserves. The fund balance starting this fiscal year that we're in now was over 50%, was equal to over 50% of our annual budgeted revenues. With our conservative budgeting philosophy, the $20 million ending fund balance versus our original budget that we put out over a year ago was plus about $4 million. I want to caveat that a little bit. We have a half a million dollar project for the build-out of our police services center that was scheduled for last year that we just collected RFP responses on, and we'll be bringing that to council shortly. So that's, that half a million was included in there. The net effect of the projected, so we've got carryovers of open contracts in the general fund that we're asking, we didn't spend the cash last year, but we had contracts in place at the end of the year. We're asking to carry those over, totaled about $800,000. And there was also $137,000 for other expenditures that are proposed and that are listed in the report. The net effect on our ending fund balance for the current fiscal year is almost a one and a quarter, one and a half million dollars more than originally budgeted last year. So again, that was a two-year outlook. At the end of the second year of the budget, we're in the second year, at the end of that second year, our budget compared to what we're proposing now is a million and a half to the good. That also includes a proposal tonight to transfer an additional $2 million into our capital projects fund. There are also a few minor adjustments to city funds that are recommended. I do want to point out, we had a separate memo that was handed out tonight. We inadvertently left the final product of a calculation that's done each year for our capital projects fund. We only included budgets for, these are projects that were started in prior years, remaining unspent balances get carried into the current year. We only included the amounts that were under contract. We actually were supposed to include the total of the unspent funds, so the spreadsheet on the second page of that handout, of the memo that I handed you tonight, actually has the column for those carryover projects. There's no impact or change to the bottom line of the fund balance that was projected, it's just that the spreadsheet or the table that was used was the wrong one, so I've corrected that. And with that, we're in good financial shape. I'm not proposing to adjust any revenues and expenditures yet for the current fiscal year. We seem to be on track with our original projections from well over a year ago, and with that, I'm open to answer any questions.
Okay, no requests to speak?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Questions from council members? Mr. Miller?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Kilibr, on page three of this report, we talked about the triple flip again, and this is going to be the last year for triple flip, right? Hopefully, we'll never talk about this again.
We got a check in July that closed it all out.
Okay, could you explain this? Because there are some numbers in here that were a little confusing to me. It says that $719,000 of the increase is due to a one-time payment received from the triple flip, and I thought that was contradicted somewhere else, I didn't highlight it unfortunately. But could you just walk us through the triple flip? What it is, how much we got for it, how it affected our property taxes?
Back in 2004, 16 years ago, the state was in some fairly dire financial straits, and instead of making some tough decisions to actually cut their budget, they decided to take money that had traditionally been local government money, so one-fourth of our sales tax, and they called that new revenue at the state. The purpose of new revenue was the only way they could issue debt, their economic recovery bonds, was if they had new revenue without going to a vote of the people. So they issued multi-million dollars, mostly billion dollars worth of debt to balance their budget for a couple of years. And in exchange for taking our quarter percent, one-fourth of our sales tax, they started reimbursing us a year later using their property tax, their portion of the property tax. So there was always a timing delay. The other thing that created was that quarter percent that they reimbursed us from property tax was no longer called sales tax for us, it was called in-lu property tax. So the budgeting and accounting gymnastics for this have been going on for 12 years. It's not always been clear on the amounts that we're going to get at any particular time. There was always delays and true-ups. So the final unwinding of all that and the final catch-up on the timing differences did occur in July of this year. We did accrue it back to fiscal year 16, and it was about 700, and I believe 80,000 without going back into here. Anyway, we did finish the triple flip, so moving forward, our sales tax is back at the full 1% of the 8% that people pay. We get 1% for sales in Dana Point, we get that. But the in-lu property tax that we've been getting for that taking of the sales tax the past 12 years has been reduced to another taking that they also did around the same time in 2005. And I don't know if you want to get into the vehicle license fee taking.
No, that's okay. I understand, I remember that one. But that's been unwound as well, correct?
No, the vehicle license fee is still there. So that was, that's actually been a tax that was in place since the Great Depression.
Right.
Back in the 1930s, that the state government decided to reduce taxes to the people of the great state of California. What they didn't tell anybody was that it wasn't a tax that actually accrued to the state, it was a local tax. So there was an uproar about that, and there was legislation passed that made them, made the state give us some of their property tax to make up for the vehicle license fees that they reduced.
Okay. So we received an additional 700, well, the confusing part was it says in-lu property tax revenue was 3.953 million for fiscal year 16, which is $669,000 or 14 and a half percent less than the same period last year.
Yes.
And then we go down here, and it says, but we got $719,000 check.
The unwinding started, of the in-lu, started in fiscal year 16, sometime around August of last year. They started unwinding it and started, we started getting in subsequent quarters that full 1%.
Okay.
So the unwinding of it had an effect on the in-lu amount.
There it is, I got it. Got it. I was trying to figure that out. And then my last question-
And I do have to say, though, that Councilmember Vixor has been on me every time he looks at a financial report, and we get to have a great conversation about the triple flip.
It's not the most straightforward thing in the world, I get it. And I ask about it almost every time it comes up, too. My last question is, you said that we have a $1.5 million surplus in this financial period?
Above the budgeted, it's-
So, but that includes-
We have a-
$1 million transfer to CIP, correct?
Okay, let's separate the two.
So I'm confused about-
FY '16, we closed the books with $4 million more than we had budgeted.
Okay.
But like I told you, there was a half a million that was expected to be spent-
Right.
-on the police service that's still going to get spent. And we've got carryovers in here. Part of the budget adjustments I'm asking for this year will be to transfer an additional $2 million out of the general fund, which leaves us with roughly 16 and a half, I'm sorry, 17 and a half million dollar fund balance, $17 million fund balance, which is more than we had originally budgeted.
By 1.5 million.
And included in the transfer to the capital improvements fund, the $2 million, there was a half a million dollars of that needed to fund current fiscal year 17 projects. That number was actually greater when we first started this, but last year, we also transferred additional monies above budget into the capital projects fund. So the bottom line in the capital projects fund, there's about a million and a half dollars that, you know, if I had to make a recommendation, be start funding next year's projects, you know, I think that's important to do. So we've kind of got a head start on the next budget process. And then the general fund does have a little bit more than we had expected two years ago, with all the reserves fully funded.
1.5 million more.
Yes.
So is it, is it safe to say we came in 1.5 million under budget?
It's safe to say that, yes, on the expenditure side. Yes.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions by other council members? Okay, seeing none, I'll move the item. It's been regularly moved and seconded, please cast your vote. The motion carries five to zero. Next item is number 10. A staff report, Mr. Shaw Kevries?
Yes, Mayor Tomlinson, I have number 10 as our annual visit to the salary ranges for represented and non-represented employees. In keeping with our MOU, with our employee group, every year we go in and we do an across-the-board analysis of how our salaries compare, and as a result of that, we bring forward recommendations. Included before you this evening is the salary range adjustment. There's also included there a reorganization as a result of some upcoming retirements. So with that, what I'd like to do is just ask Mr. Kilibr to provide a little bit more detail to what I've said. Go ahead, Mike.
So we, by city employee classification type of position, we survey other cities in the county. Not all cities have all the same classifications, but we get a pretty broad swath of what the current salaries are. We take all those salary ranges, we get a median out of them, and establish our salary ranges that we bring to the City Council. The salary range adjustments don't necessarily translate into increased pay. We are required to publish a, to have the council approve and to publish salary ranges under state law, publish them and also put them on our website and share them with the state. And then we can only pay within those ranges. In this, in some years, it happens where we'll make an adjustment to a salary range, we'll increase it, and an existing employee will fall below the salary range. So there's a mechanism to give raises for those. I don't believe we have any of those in this, in this go-around. So beyond that, we do, we are asking to add a assistant engineer position to round out the ladder, if you will, of positions in the engineering ranks. We've had an occasion where we may not have a successful recruitment for an engineer, but there's some good candidates that look like they might fill in as an assistant engineer with the, with the future ahead of them, give them some experience. So we're asking to add that classification, so that we're not just underfilling an existing engineer position, but we actually have that classification. We're asking for an additional budgeted position. And then the third area is the combination of public works and community services with the retirement of the community services director a couple of months ago, and the upcoming retirement of our public works director, we're looking to consolidate the two departments with one department head, and then to have two deputy department heads underneath them. The same number of budgeted positions exists, and there's actually a little bit of a savings, annually, a cost savings from the adjustments to the salaries that are included in this plan. So with that, that's the, that's the meat of what's in this report.
We'd be happy to respond to any questions the council may have.
Mr. Miller?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thanks-
In this, in some years, it happens where we'll make an adjustment to a salary range. We'll increase it and an existing employee will fall below the salary range. So there's a mechanism to give raises for those. I don't believe we have any of those in this go-around. So beyond that, we do, we are asking to add a assistant engineer position to round out the ladder, if you will, of positions in the engineering ranks. We've had occasion where we may not have a successful recruitment for an engineer and, but there's some good candidates that look like they might fill in as an assistant engineer with the future ahead of them, give them some experience. So we're asking to add that classification so that we're not just underfilling an existing engineer position, but we actually have that classification. We're asking for an additional budgeted position. And then the third area is the combination of public works and community services with the retirement of the community services director a couple of months ago. And the upcoming retirement of our public works director, we're looking to consolidate the two departments with one department head and then to have two deputy department heads underneath them. The same number of budgeted positions exists. And there's actually a little bit of a savings, annually, a cost savings from the adjustments to the salaries that are included in this plan. So with that, that's the meat of what's in this report.
We'd be happy to respond to any questions the council may have.
Mr. Miller?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thanks, Mr. Kilabru. There's a couple of things on the salary range that I'd like to see done a little bit differently, maybe next time. Instead of giving us monthly salary ranges, could you give us an annual range? Instead of, we have to go back and do the multiplication. It's easy. It's a spreadsheet. We could see it as a annual-
We could absolutely do that. This is just a traditional human resources and government approach. But I would be glad to add that.
There's two other things I'd like to see on it. I would like to see total comp for these employees, including their retirement, what we're paying, you know, the total compensation for each class. Now, when I say that, I'd also like to know how many employees we have in each class.
Okay.
Okay? Just some housekeeping stuff, so it's a little bit easier to understand what's going on.
Excuse me, Mike. Would that be a separate chart similar to what we provide to the state every year on the webpage already?
I think he's asking for a little bit different when we're looking at the salary, the classification structure.
Okay.
As opposed to actual salary where you might have some employees that only work part of the year, others that might have had a cash out, some that might have had a promotion. That would be a total comp on actuals. I think you're asking for a total comp on the classification.
On the classification.
And then the number of bodies in each class.
And each classification. I don't need it done by individual employee.
Okay.
If you fall in this class, this is what your total comp would be. And this is what the range of it would be based on retirement and everything else, and the health benefits and everything else that we offer.
There is going to be one... I'm going to have to put an asterisk on some of those because we've got the old and the new pension.
Sure.
So the costs, when I'm just looking at a classification, I'm going to have to make an assumption on whether it's an existing, a person in-
How many people would fall under the old classification?
Most. But every year, we transition to the new lower pension plan.
Right.
So, and I could actually hire somebody next year that still qualifies for the old plan because they've already been in the pension system.
Assistant somewhere, right. Sure.
So I would have to maybe do... I might have to look at it two different ways.
Yeah. I understand what you're saying.
But we'll do something. We'll make some assumptions and we'll present the assumptions.
Okay. And lastly, this looks like a reorganization.
It is.
And I'm assuming that's why it came to us, because we're trying to create new positions. And, I mean, we're creating deputy positions, which are-
That's correct.
Basically, new positions. I'm a little uncomfortable with voting on that currently. I'm not saying I'm uncomfortable with it in general. I just haven't seen enough information. I haven't seen the actual organizational chart. I saw one that left off our director of community services, our assistant city manager's not listed on it. It shows, it goes from the city manager to a deputy city manager to some other deputies. And I don't know if my, it's just my org chart got cut off.
No.
But I don't totally-
That was specific to the new department as opposed to citywide.
Yeah, I don't totally understand how that works. And I would like to hear a little bit more about how it affects the rest of the organization than what I'm reading right here. I just think three days, it kind of caught me off guard when I saw it, that, you know, we're creating totally new positions. And I'm not sure why exactly we need them.
Well, the irony in it is that the organization is being proposed resembles what it looked like when I got here.
Okay.
And what we're doing is we're preparing for my eventual retirement sooner as opposed to later, depending on who you talk to. But having said that, the thought is, is that we can create an organization that will ensure the integrity over time, will give the future council some options to ensure an interim period or the selection of my eventual replacement, but also to make sure that we prepare the deputy department heads to possibly go back to being department heads at some point in the future, whereby I could see, you know, at some point, the council possibly say, okay, the deputy director will go back to the way it was and this would be an interim thing. But regardless, the point of this was to try and identify some efficiencies, give people some additional support and training to be department heads. And I think it's leading up to when I retire. As I mentioned, the council, I'm planning on doing that. I promised my family two to three years. So I think it would be, you know, we're recommending it. Mr. Kilabru and I exhaustively looked at it to arrive at a situation where it'll save some money, but it'll provide a really good opportunity for the organization to evolve and provide some stability and security in the interim. Because typically, most city managers give their council six months' notice and says, I'll see you when I leave. My thought is, is because I've invested almost 15 complete years here, I want the organization to live beyond me. But I also want to give my employees the opportunity to have a sense of security. So when my eventual replacement is here, that the organization suffers as little as possible. So with that, you know, again, responding to questions.
I appreciate that, Mr. Chokevus. But I think the limited amount of time we've had to really look at this and digest what's going on, I'm not saying that this is a bad idea for the city. I'm just saying I need more time personally to review this and really understand the impacts and what it means to the organization as a whole. You know, I don't want to, you know, my motion would be, or my recommendation would be to table this until we've had a little bit more time to see it. I don't think it's time-sensitive.
Well, we have Mr. Fowler's retirement. We have a vacancy. And the key thing is I do want to get moving with some recruitments. If the organization isn't going to change, I need to get going with a full-time replacement for Mr. Fowler and then fill the community services department. But again, the organization, that's the council's call and I'll do whatever the council wants to do.
And again, and I appreciate that. You know, I don't think it needs to wait a month, but I would like a little bit of time to look at this and truly understand it. I mean, I've had it for a couple of days in reading through all this, trying to digest. It looks like the responsibility of the new deputy city manager are incredibly extensive. And, you know, for me, I'm just not real comfortable with it yet. And so that would be my motion is that we table this until the next meeting so we have some time to talk about it and truly understand what's going on and then move the rest of the action.
See, Mr. Olivera, would you like your question or comment before?
Just to weigh in, my impression when I saw that org chart and this report, having starting out in engineering as an engineer and then as a supervisor and manager, project manager and vice president of engineering for the company, I saw this org chart and I knew of Mr. Chokevus's future plans for, like he just mentioned, two to three years for retirement. I thought this org chart was very inspired to meet that goal. One of the things as a councilman that I was always nervous of is trying to hire a new city manager. Dana Point has had a history in its early years of going through city managers every other year. And some worked and some didn't work. I think, do you have longevity for the-
Every day is a record.
Every day is a record.
Keeps getting bigger and bigger.
So we've been very fortunate in having Mr. Chokevus. In looking at that org chart and Mr. Mueller's comment is that the deputy city manager has extreme responsibility is absolutely correct. And that's what's so unique and impressive to me about this org chart is that Mr. Chokevus can definitely guide and train a person of his choosing that fits the Dana Point model of governing. And I just think it's ideal to be able to have an organization that basically will be temporary. And as Mr. Chokevus retires, then the city council will be looking at, what is the new city manager going to, how is he going to manage his staff? I learned a long time ago that managing is a very, it takes a lot of experience. And so I applaud the recommendation that Mr. Chokevus gives us.
Before we move on to discussion, let's have any more questions for staff before we, because we have a motion that's on the table. If I understand it correctly, the motion is to approve-
I've got some more questions.
Okay. Let's go through the questions first, guys, and then we'll add a discussion.
So I've got the org chart right here. And from what I understand, the deputy city manager slash the director of public works.
And community services. He can be the director of both departments.
That's not what it says here, but that's not what my org chart says. But okay, okay. I got it. Does the director of public works not report directly to you right now?
Yes, he does. All the employees work for me with the exception of the city attorney.
Well, I'm not talking about all the employees.
No, but I'm just saying, he's one of them.
I'm talking about your direct reports.
Yeah, that's correct.
So currently, you have, the director of public works already reports to you, correct?
That's correct.
What's the purpose of making them a deputy city manager?
It's not that person. It's creating a position. So with the thought that eventually, when I retire, is that Mr. Kilabru can work with this person and possibly, most likely, if this person wouldn't be a successful candidate for the city manager job and Mr. Kilabru were, this person could slide over and take Mr. Kilabru's job as the assistant city manager. And at that time, depending on what was up with the organization, they could go back to having two department heads or what have you. But this is basically, as I see it, a getting someone on board who can be a deputy but can also work with Mr. Kilabru, especially in the last year that I'm here, to ensure that nothing falls off the table and it's a seamless transition as possible. And-
So are you saying, and I understand that Mr. Fowler is going to retire. So currently, how many department heads do you have? You have director of community services, Mrs. Luna Reynosa. You have assistant city manager, Mr. Kilabru, Mr. Fowler, director of public works. Those are the three direct reports you have?
I have Mike Rose, who has the facilities. Russ is our chief of police.
But as department heads, those are the three department heads that you have. And so-
Well, no, again, we have community services.
Community services as well. I forgot about community services. I'm sorry about that.
So in essence, what we're doing is we're reducing that number to one department head. So in essence, the public works director and the community services director are going to be combined into one position. And because of the scope of that responsibility and the thought that that person might eventually evolve into a candidate to either move into Mr. Kilabru's office or possibly compete for my spot when I'm gone, the thought being that it would be a deputy city manager because the responsibility is going to be twice that of a department head.
Okay. I still don't understand why we need this position. And that's why I'm not comfortable with it. I'm not saying it's wrong. I'm just saying I'm not comfortable right now.
That's right.
And it looks like, it looks like we have the positions right now. And I don't understand why we need this deputy director, city manager. But, okay. And by the way, when I look at deputy city manager, that to me sounds like that's second in line.
No, it's not. Mr. Kilabru is the assistant city manager and the deputy would be, and I believe the salary range reflects that, correct, Mike? Yes. It's not as high as Mr. Kilabru's.
What page would that be? Did you see that salary? Is that on somewhere? I just want to see that. I didn't catch that.
Page 29 has the assistant city manager and the... Hang on. I've got to get the right schedule. That was 2011. I'm getting page 50. The current schedule, how's that? Sorry. Page 56 has the assistant... I'm sorry, the deputy city manager and... Page 50.
Assistant city manager's above that, okay.
Oh, right above it, yeah. So you see the fourth line down is assistant city manager. And then farther down, you have the deputy city manager.
Okay. I stand by my motion.
Any further questions before we?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I'll ask some questions. To make it clear what the recommended action is, we're being asked to establish salary ranges and also establish these new positions.
That's correct.
So we're sort of combining two separate actions into one. Is there, was that done, the recommendation, was that done for expediency? Or is there some reason that those have to go together?
Every salary, every salary range that we have for the city has to be on one schedule. In fact, we were just told by PERS recently, they also want city council members on that schedule. That's why we had to go back four years and you're re-adopting old schedules. So this is something new they decided they wanted us to do, even though that your salary is already set in our code. And then they also wanted the city manager's salary on here, even though that's an adopted contract that the council has to report in an open, vote on in an open session. So they added some things. So, yes, we, it's, I don't know about expediency, but it all has to be on the schedule.
That's sort of my question. Do we have to do both? Or if we table it, I mean, can we vote on one and say we're establishing salary ranges, but we're setting aside the reorg for the moment? Or is it something that has to be done?
I believe you can do an amended motion that backs out-
Those three positions.
The new positions. The deputy public works director, the deputy community services director, and the deputy city manager slash public works director.
Or you could adopt the salary schedules, but bring back that item if you wanted to. I mean, you can do whatever you want.
Yeah. What the council could adopt it as, it's your call.
I just, I want to make sure, because I probably asked for clarification on what the motion is. But I think that was sort of what, where we were going with it. So I wanted to make sure it wasn't an all-or-nothing type thing or perhaps-
Just to be clear, though, we have to, in order for us to have a classification and to write a paycheck, they have to be paid within a salary range that's published on this schedule. So even if we brought it, if we didn't have them included in here and we brought it back later, I'm bringing this entire schedule back for you to re-adopt it with the new classifications on it. So-
Okay. So it doesn't really make any sense to break it up then. You might as well just table the whole thing or vote on it all together. Okay. Let me, let me get a clarification on, because I heard something that sort of goes against my, I'll call it a common understanding, but it appears that the intent is that the assistant city manager is a higher-ranking position than the deputy city manager?
That's correct.
In my experience, the deputy is, would be, I think, as was mentioned, second in line.
My experience in local government, at least here in California, the hierarchy is city manager, assistant city manager, deputy city manager.
And that's been mine in over 25, 26 years.
Okay. I mean, maybe I'm, it hasn't been my experience. I don't know if it makes a difference legally. Maybe it doesn't. We do whatever we want, I suppose.
It's semantics. You call it grand poopy.
Do the words have meaning or not? I mean, in my world, they sort of do. But I get it now that the intent here is to, is to create a position that is subordinate to both the city manager and the assistant city manager, sort of third in line? Because if that's the case, you know, all of the job requirements of the deputy city manager, are those also your job requirements as the assistant city manager as well?
No. There's the job description that's included in here for the new combined position for the public works and community services combined director slash deputy city manager includes components of both the public works director and the community services directors. And then my position as assistant city manager slash director of administrative services, I've got some unique responsibilities under mine as well. In all cases, we still report to him.
And I guess what I'm getting at is just to sort of keep it simple, city manager isn't here, like I was saying, the deputy would be the acting city manager. Now, what we're intending to do is, city manager isn't here. You're the acting city manager. If you're not here to-
The job description actually says if the city manager and the assistant city manager aren't there, then the deputy city manager is next in line.
Yes. But at the same time, I believe the city manager ordinance says that I appoint, who's the acting city manager in my absence. So I could appoint Mike Rose if he had a personal issue or what have you. But having said that, yes.
But the, the position is, and like I was saying, in my mind, it's sort of a dual responsibility. You're the deputy city manager. You've got to be able to handle everything the city manager does if you hold this position. But you also are a, you're the director of public works and community services, which we used to have two individuals doing that. Now, we're going to take all those responsibilities, put them on to one person for both of those, and add on, that's the intent, is to add the city manager responsibility on top.
But at the same time, we're going to have a deputy director of Matt Sinacori and Brian McClure, who already do the lion's share of the work. So again, it's not as if, there's, there's additional responsibility, but there's people to do the work as well.
All right, well, I guess before we move on to the discussion, I'll just ask one last question. What's the intent of the, the title? Why does it have to be called the Deputy City Manager? Why are you not just creating the Director of Public Works and Community Services?
Because of the additional responsibility. And the thought being is that this person, whoever it is, would be able to be groomed into eventually moving into the Assistant City Manager role or possibly the City Manager role, depending whatever the council's pleasure is at that time.
Okay. I don't know if there's further questions, but I'm ready to, let me understand the motion, to further discussion on this.
I'll amend the motion that we table the item.
Okay, I'll, I'll second the motion.
Okay, moving on to discussion, I did have a question. When, when does this have to be put into firm action? When is there a drop dead date on when this has to be adopted?
Well, certainly for the three new positions that wouldn't get approved, that nothing happens on those. We do have one position in the, well, we've got the, the proposed new Assistant City Engineer position. I think we've had an open position that we've been recruiting on, that we would actually like to move forward with an underfilling and have that classification available to us. And then on the, we've got one position in our Structural Engineer slash Senior Civil Engineer. We're proposing an adjustment to the range to deal with a retention issue that we would like to kind of see move forward, so we don't lose somebody.
Okay, Mr. Vixorik brought up the question of whether, you know, this new, there seems to be a lot of responsibilities from what I'm hearing. And the person handling his job can definitely, that's not, you know, and Mr. Kilibrue, hold on.
One last thing, and then I've got Shelley over here, our Human Resources Analyst, saying that we went through a pretty rigorous CalPERS audit over the summer, and the recommendation to add the city council to the salary range, the city manager to the salary range, and to retroactively adopt them back to 2012, all that's included in this report. They're pretty much banging on us, asking for us, they've told us we should have, we should have gotten this done, you know, months ago, but putting it together was a bit of a Herculean task, so... There's some timing issues on that. I don't personally think they're going to slap us with any kind of fines or anything, but it's nice to be, quote, in compliance.
And Mr. Kilibrue, you, I just have some more questions before we jump into the discussion. How long have you been Assistant City Manager here? I know Mr. Shakavie said 15 years from now, how long have you been here?
Been with Dana Point for over nine years. I think I've been the Assistant City Manager for seven.
So in your opinion, this, this works for you? I mean, is this, is this something that you...
Worked very closely with Doug in, in putting the design of this together, including job descriptions, and in, in talking with the, the senior level staff in the departments about what'll work and, you know, what their input was. So it was, it's been a lengthy process of us talking about this for some, some time now.
It wasn't done in a vacuum. A lot of staff was included in this with the thought of doing it whatever we can to preserve the organization and, and ensure a smooth transition upon my departure.
I don't have the experience that you two gentlemen have. Is Deputy City Manager a term of art used within, in the city management world?
Yes, it is. And Mr. Kilibrue has articulated it well to the prior question that was asked.
And the understanding of it in the industry is this, as you've explained it to us.
But, but if I can just, we don't get into titles here. We do our job, okay? I, you know, we're all peers, we all work on the same team. And so again, I, I don't get caught up in titles. I just get caught up in what people can do and what they can bring to the organization. I try and hire the best people I can. I think with this title and this range, I can hire the best person I can to bring to the organization. I do, I have, going to have, I'm going to have two openings now at the department head level. I need to get moving on that, we have a lot of work going on. At the same time, with this opportunity, I saw an opportunity for us to deal with my, you know, my upcoming retirement in two to three years. And the sooner we can get on this, the better. Having said that, but again, it's the council's organization when it's all said and done, so, you know...
Okay. That, that ends my questions. Are anybody, any further questions before we open? Okay, one more question.
So, could we adopt the, the salary schedule with the deputy positions in it, but hold off on saying whether or not we're going to allow the deputy positions in the organization? Could we do that? So that way you wouldn't have to bring back the entire salary schedule, correct? Is that correct?
Well, I mean, if you give direction of what you want to see, yeah. I mean, if you...
Well, that, my question is, can we do that?
Yes.
I mean, I, you know, we can direct and do a lot of stuff, but is, is that legal to do that? We could adopt the salary schedule with those positions in it, but bifurcate those out at this point on whether or not we think that's the right thing for our organizational chart?
Yes. I mean, just make your direction clear that that's, that you're approving this in the event that you then ultimately approve the reorganization. You're basically bifurcating those two discussions. So if it happens, you've got your salary schedule in place already?
So that will, that will handle the CalPERS issue on the timing. It will handle the understaffed positions, it'll take care of all that other stuff. It'll just be, are we willing to put the deputy positions in place or not?
Yes.
Okay, I guess I have to, how do I do that? Do I amend my amended motion?
Basically just say you're amending your motion to accomplish what you just said, if that's what your goal is.
I'm amending my motion to accomplish what I just said.
We get it.
All right.
And you need a second on the amended motion now. And at some point, you need to ask if there's public comment on the item? Or if you may have speaker's slip or not, I don't know.
Okay.
I'll second the motion.
And Mr. Mayor, considering that motion, I'd like to offer a substitute motion to move the recommended action.
I'll second it.
All right, I'm a little lost what to do here now. What, what's my course of action? Do I have to ask for public comment if there's any speakers?
Yeah, we haven't had public comment on the topic yet. So before you vote on the item, you have to have public comment, or at least ask if there is any.
Is, is there any public comment?
There is not, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you.
Check that box. Now, under Robert's rules, you have a substitute motion. So the substitute motion has to be voted on first. And then, depending on the outcome of the substitute motion, then you go back to the original motion. And you can ask for discussion on the substitute motion if you'd like.
Okay, let's open up for discussion on substitute motion. Anybody?
I've said my, my thoughts.
I'm comfortable or I wouldn't have made the motion.
Okay.
Well, I'll add in my thoughts on this. You know, I, I think this has been fully vetted by, by the City Manager and the Assistant City Manager. They're both onboard with their experience in the industry and, and the common usage of this term. I don't have any problem with the titles. I, I do understand that there's, there is some sort of urgency to get, to get this passed for the CalPERS issues, but, and I also understand that this will result in some savings to the city. So based on, on that, I think I like the idea. Any other comments?
Okay. We'll call for the question. Okay, motion passes three to two with Councilmember Vixorik and Councilmember Miller voting nay. Okay, Mr. Benios, do we now have to take up that second, second motion? Or is that eliminated? That eliminates it, okay, thank you.
What's the next, item 12 is next?
Item 12, Mr. Shakavie?
Yes, item number 12.
Mr. Mayor, 12 and 13 are basically, they're, they're very closely associated, correct? This is all about the bike paths and the mobility study. Can we take those at the same time? Instead of trying 12 and then 13?
Well, you pull the items if you'd like to discuss them at the same time. That's certainly a prerogative.
Okay, so if we're going to discuss both items, 12 and... 12 and 13, okay.
Before you proceed, Mr. Shakavie, I would like to recuse myself on, if we're going to combine them. I vetted this out with the city attorney. Well, if they're both related, that, that's fine, I can, I can, I'll leave it to you gentlemen. My family has a house near, near here, and I vetted this out with the city's attorney's office. And then there's, I just want an abundance of caution, just for any appearance of any, any conflict of interest, I'd like to excuse myself. So I'll be outside, I'll hand the gavel over to Mayor Pro Tem Vixorik. Get some coffee first, guys?
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. With that, I, I think we'll take them up one at a time. Let's start with item 12.
We're going to take them up one at a time because Mayor Pro Tem can, I mean, the mayor can participate in number 12, I believe. Anyway, regardless, Brad, would you please present item number 12 and number 13?
Yes, thank you. Item number 12 is the preliminary design activities for the Doheny Village Connectivity Enhancement Study. The Connectivity Enhancement Study that's included in your report was done in 2013 and identified enhancements to bicycle and pedestrian mobility as well as connectivity and beautifying the area between Doheny Park Road and Coast Highway and down through the park. The city would like to move the conceptual plans forward, that was the connectivity study, by developing preliminary traffic design plans and secure the necessary approvals, particularly from the California Department of Transportation, Caltrans. We have presented the conceptual study to Caltrans. They responded with a list of items required from the city in their letter attached to supporting document D to your staff report, much of which is traffic and survey-related study information. Their approval is necessary because the improvements, to the most extent, is on property that is controlled by Caltrans. If the city wants to be able to move forward and submit grant applications for what they call adaptive transportation funding, which is basically helping with bicycle and pedestrian traffic, additional work is needed at this time. This study and the proposal was presented at the Doheny Village Community Meeting last week and received broad public support at that meeting. The request is for $28,000 for LLG engineers to work on the traffic side and $12,500 for David Evans and Associates to work on the surveying side. A total request, because there will be some follow-on design work that's necessary, is $100,000 funding from existing traffic safety repairs and improvement, CIP funding. That's it.
Thank you, you have any questions from council? Councilmember Miller.
Mr. Fowler, I thank, thank you for the report. You did a good job on this at the Doheny Village study as well. The one question did come up from one of the residents down there about why wouldn't we just go back under the overpass from basically, you know, where, where, where it connects with the state park and Doheny, Doheny Beach? Instead of taking it through underneath the, underneath, when I say underneath the, the bridge, not the overpass, the bridge, over the creek? Instead of trying to navigate all the on-ramps and off-ramps over near the village, you could come in along the creek and go up in, either off Las Vegas or, or Victoria. And I was just wondering, have we, have you thought, at, at the time, it seemed like it wasn't something we had thought about, but it looks like it's a much cleaner solution than trying to navigate all those ramps?
I, I don't think...
High-speed traffic that goes through there.
Well, you either, and what you're talking about is trying to get from the, um, the east side of the levee for San Juan Creek. So in order to get across there, you have to cross railroad track. And you have to cross the 30 acres property to do that.
No, 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 that's what I'm talking...
Okay.
Well, what I'm talking about is...
Well, when you said Las Vegas or that sort of thing, you'd have to do that to make that connection.
But there, you know, the bridge that goes across the creek?
Yes.
Where the railroad tracks there?
Yes.
Is that, that's, okay. All right, that, that answers my question. Okay.
Okay.
Thank you, I, I was, I was a little vague on that when we had that at, at the village. All right, thank you.
Do we have any other questions from council members or staff? Seeing none, do we have any public comment? Yes, Madam Clerk. Well, we're taking one at a time. Okay, I'll, I'll do it. All right, it's Richard Gardner, would you like to speak on item 12 or 13 or both?
12 is fine to start.
Okay, Mr. Gardner.
Actually, I also wish to speak on number nine, but it was consent calendar item. Wasn't sure whether it was going to, you know, I, I did get to see the staff report, and I have several questions or comments.
Okay, Mr. Gardner, why don't you speak on number 12 now and during the public comment?
For number 12, the question of mobility in the Doheny Village is probably the most important thing that'll, that'll help and that could perhaps change and, and really enhance the future of the whole area, more than any other thing that can be done. And the only entity that can make those changes is the city of Dana Point, not the water district that owns 30 acres next door and no private property owner, because it would, it would require a crossing of the tracks. And only a, an entity that has police services can put in the request. However, an at-grade crossing like the one up in San Juan at Los Rios, you suddenly have a wonderful place for pedestrians and bikes. People go across all the time. You could have a, the old Victoria Boulevard went straight on through, went over to the creek. You could go to the east side of the San Juan Creek and ride on a bike trail that doesn't exist now. And there could be some public uses on the 30 acres that would enhance that property. At one time, there were. So if you're not considering that mobility option, that's, that's very unfortunate. That's the most important. As far as the rest of the questions, I'm not sure that the city has much say as to whether you can acquire private property to put extra parking or, or bike lanes. You have to put it in the street where you already are. So I'm not sure what you can do outside of striping, maybe. But this issue of going across the tracks would be a wonderful asset, especially for the people who might wish to enjoy some of the projects that could go on the 30 acres. Thanks.
Thank you for your comments. Seeing no further requests to speak, I will go to the council for comments. Councilman Schoeffel.
I think we should move forward with the study. Time's a wasting, I think, needs to be looked at by the appropriate professionals. And I would be prepared to move the recommended action.
Thank you, Councilman Schoeffel, I will second the motion. Do we have any further discussion? Seeing no further discussion, call for the vote. And the item passes four to zero with one individual did not vote. The mayor did not vote. Okay, moving on to item 13. Can we have a staff report on that, please?
Thank you. Well, this deals with the Coast Highway Class 1 Bike Way Pedestrian Way Phase 2 project for the OCTA Bicycle Corridor Improvement Program. We covered this recently, and the city has applied for a grant and received approval from OCTA for nearly $2.1 million to do the second phase of the Class 1 Bicycle and Pedestrian Walkway that would be on Coast Highway on the ocean side, between where we put the new crosswalk in and the existing bridge over the railroad tracks near Olamendes down to Doheny Park Road. The first phase that goes from the crosswalk bridge to Beach Road and Palisades is already under design, has already been funded. The primary reason for the project is to improve bicycle safety along this high-speed vehicular corridor and reduce... vehicular corridor and reduce the incidence of bicycle fatalities that have occurred in past years. That said, the project also provides safety fencing to inhibit access to the railroad tracks, provides beautification elements with drought-tolerant landscaping, as well as low-level bollard pedestrian lighting for the safety of pedestrians moving along that corridor. We require a 12% match for this grant. In your fiscal impact section, you will see that the city's match that we're asking for is $461,000 against the $2,000, nearly $2.1 million of eligible work. That funding would come nearly half from air quality enhancement funds, and then the proposal is to pull $200,000 from existing sidewalk and concrete capital improvement project funding that you've already budgeted, as well as $71,000 from the Traffic Safety Capital Improvement Program that's already budgeted. There was a concern expressed that if we did this, that state parks might preclude us from using the bike travel way in the park, and we don't see any credence to that. That's a public park that bicyclists will continue to be able to use. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fowler. Do we have any questions from the council or staff? Councilman Miller?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protam. Mr. Fowler, where does it start and end on this phase of it?
This phase of it begins where the new county crosswalk and bridge, existing railroad bridge is near Olamendes, and comes all the way up to Doheny Park Road. It would meet where the connectivity study is to begin.
Right, that's why I pulled them off.
And, and our, Phase One is already under design for construction next year. This would be Phase Two. The connectivity study that we've discussed in the past would be the next phase that we believe we could get bicycle improvement funds to do for the connectivity study, which was item 12, and primarily fund that from grant funds. In addition, we would also, with the connectivity study, try and do the sidewalk on the inland side that comes from your hotels and your time shares to get people to a crosswalk at Doheny Park Road. So, and that's been a community request for a number of years also there. And then you'll have complete access and safe bicycle and pedestrian from Doheny Village, either going into Doheny State Park or south towards San Clemente.
And this is a protected bike lane?
Yes.
With the K-rail or?
No, it's actually up on the sidewalk. So we'll have a 14-
So it's a shared bike lane sidewalk?
It's a shared, we'll delineate the pedestrian side as well as the bicycle side.
And it'll be going in both directions?
Both directions.
Okay.
For the bicycle traffic.
And it connects all the way to Doheny State Park? Is that where, it'll end there, and then you'll pick up the, well, I guess, part of the connectivity study, then move over to-
That's correct. It will connect both ways. It will connect with Phase One, so you'll have a two-way bicycle corridor that runs from Doheny Park Road all the way to San Clemente when we're done. And you will also have going on Coast Highway, under the railroad bridge next to the Double Tree, into Doheny State Park, the access that's a safe bicycle access way that we hope that our bicyclists will use to then get out to Dana Point Harbor Drive, up Golden Lantern, and up Pacific Coast Highway.
Okay, thank you, and with that, I'll move the item.
I'll second it. Mr. Mayor Protam.
All right, thank you. Before we move on to the vote, I don't believe I asked for any public comment. Do we have any public comment? Mr. Gardner? If you haven't already, please fill out a form. Okay, thank you very much.
Yeah, it's, it's good to see these items come before the city council. Nearly 20 years ago, I brought these to the city. I think John Bahorsky was the manager at the time. In any event, it was obvious to me that changes had to occur. It was, it was pretty bad, and it still is. For instance, if you're out there on that Coast Highway Bridge, half of the bridge is in the state park. The other half of the bridge is southbound traffic on, I guess that's Highway One. Maybe it's Coast Highway. Not sure. I know that there was a $450,000 grant to Caltrans to look at the bridge to see how to better handle it, because people couldn't travel in the park without being on the same bridge as cars that are coming across that are going to get on, you know, down by the Double Tree. But what always bothered me, and it continues to, is when you get down by Pochee, what do you do down there? Where do you go? What side of the road are you on? Do you take the side behind the K-rail? Or do you ride in the street? Do you stay on the right-hand side with the joggers? It's real, real confusing. Of course, that's not so bad now, because there used to be a way to go under Coast Highway in the storm drain to get to the beach, but that's been closed, so now we have pedestrians there. In any event, I hope that you're considering all the alternatives and what the impacts will be. The impacts, I mean, for bicyclists going in all different places, especially the east side of the San Juan Creek that travels all the way to San Juan, or, well, it stops up there. But if that's going to be a path, then you have to have safe ways to get on there, and that requires crossing again. So don't leave any loose ends, and I hope you don't make up your mind before all of these options are being vetted before the public and especially before the bicycling community. But I thank you for at least identifying this and working on it. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Bringing it back to the council, is there any further discussion? Seeing none, I will call for the vote. And the item passes four to zero. Again, Mayor Tomlinson not voting. With that, I will turn the gavel back over to the mayor to proceed on with the meeting. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for carrying on in my absence. Okay, it looks like we're done with 12 and 13. Moving on to item 14. Mr. Shaw, Kavy, has a staff report, please.
Item number 14, Mayor Tomlinson, is an amendment to the city's Conflict of Interest Code. As the report points out, the Political Reform Act requires that the city review its Conflict of Interest Code each even number of years, and determinative changes in circumstances require any revisions to submit a report to the code reviewing body no later than October 1st of that same year. The report you have before you and the Conflict of Interest Code reflects those changes as compiled by our city clerk, Kathy Ward. With that, we're recommending your approval and adoption of the attached resolution, and we'd be happy to respond to any questions you might have at this time.
Questions from council? Mayor Protam, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I actually don't have any questions. I just wanted to point out that I did pull this item, but the reason I pulled it was that I thought it was related to the earlier item, because it was adding the deputy city manager position and whatnot. So I don't actually have any questions on this. So with that, I would move the recommended action.
Okay, Madam Clerk. Do we have any public comments on item 14?
No, we don't.
Okay. It's been regularly moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none, please cast your vote. Motion carries five to zero. Thank you. Madam Clerk, at this time, the city clerk will read the titles of ordinances listed on the agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have no ordinance titles to read this evening. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to the public comments portion of our agenda. There will be a three-minute time limit per person and an overall time limit of 15 minutes for this public comments portion of the agenda. The mayor's discretion, the balance of public comments, will be heard after the new business portion of the agenda. All comments are to be directed to the city council and shall not consist of any personal attacks. Members of the public are expected to maintain a professional courteous decorum during their comments. State law prohibits the city council from taking an action, action on a specific item unless it appears on the posted agenda. The city clerk will distribute any handouts you may have. Please state your name and city of residence for the record. Miriam Rupke is our first speaker, followed by Penny Maynard and Chipla Coloco. Pardon me?
Chipla, I see Kavy.
Okay. And that will be followed by Jason.
Good evening, council members. My name is Miriam Rupke, and I'm a resident of Capistrano Beach. I wanted to start off by thanking the council members for their vote to approve ordinance 5.38. As a short-term rental permit holder, I feel the city of Dana Point has a model ordinance that serves as an example for other beach communities. As a beach city, we rely heavily on tourist dollars to support our local economy. This ordinance is a prime example of how we can preserve our residential neighborhoods by ensuring proper permits are in place and enforcement thereof, so that all residents can enjoy the peaceful comforts of their home while also welcoming tourists into our community. In fact, I wanted to share a post from Capo Next Door. Each of you should have a copy. This was a post made by one of the more vocal members of the opposition in reference to a particular rowdy short-term rental home in San Clemente. She references Dana Point's short-term rental ordinance as a model that San Clemente should adopt. This was a post made by Tony Nelson in March of this year. Take a look at Dana Point's municipal code for short-term rentals. It's very strict and does not allow parking issues or parties. Ask your city to enact something similar and get this regulated. Go to dana point.org and search vacation rentals municipal code. I find it interesting that a comment like this would be made commending Dana Point's STR ordinance, and then only a few months later to take such a strong stance against it. It makes me question what the real motives are here. Council members, there is a great deal of false information that is being spread amongst our community by members of this anti-short-term rental group. False information that was refuted at the last council meeting is being used as a mechanism to scare residents into signing a referendum. I'm still hearing about the 70 illegal STRs in Niguel Beach Terrace when three of their board members spoke at the last meeting and confirmed this was false. Allegations of hundreds of unpermitted STRs citywide when Ted Harris himself spoke to this and said there were no more than 40 max. The residents opposed to this ordinance are spreading conspiracy theories and hypothetical what-ifs. Crimes against women, children, and seniors are going to rise from STRs. Yeah, because we give discounts to convicts and pedophiles to rape and pillage our neighborhoods. There will be an influx of investors that will come in and sweep up all residential housing, kicking out long-term tenants. This is an interesting hypothetical what-if, considering the number of STRs has actually dropped by half since the ordinance was adopted, claiming that city enforcement will virtually be nonexistent and residents will be required to police their own neighborhoods. Wasn't this the case before the ordinance was in place and the exact reason why this was adopted? The members opposed to this ordinance are asking for democratic fairness. Since when does democracy involve conjuring up blatant lies and wild exaggerations to mislead people from the truth? You want democratic fairness, then perhaps we should start off by posting a fax page about STRs on the city website to educate all residents of Dana Point the truths versus these fabricated myths. It is only fair that the residents in our community are properly informed of this topic before they are scared into signing something they know nothing about. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Penny Maynard, please.
Hello. My name is Penny Maynard, and I am a resident of Dana Point and have been one for 20 years. I am a candidate for Dana Point City Council. Being a petite person, some of you may have missed seeing me in the Dana Point Times' Facebook stream and in a photo from the forum last Friday sponsored by the Dana Point Civic Association. I recently read an article regarding Airbnb and their lawsuits regarding short-term rentals. I don't know how many are, how many residents utilized Airbnb, but it caused me some concern. Along with suing San Francisco, they are also suing Anaheim and Santa Monica for local ordinances they do not consider favorable to their business model. I have provided a copy of the article to the city clerk, and I am emailing one to Tony Nelson. It's worth reading. Although negativity, although nationally, there's been a lot of negativity. We live in such a beautiful community that it's time to take the negative discourse out of this campaign. Let's all work together to make this beautiful community, beautiful and well-run community even better. Again, I am a candidate for city council, and I am in it to win it. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Jason Chokla, I, Jason, I mispronounced your name again. I apologize.
Coloso. Yeah, so Jason Coloso, resident of Dana Point for the last 11 years. Mayor, city council, city staff, thank you for allowing me to spend a few minutes speaking with you. First, I'd like to congratulate you on the passage of what I think might be the best ordinance I've ever come across. It's very well-written, and, you know, I'm just very happy that it was passed. There are many in our community critical of the work you do, but I truly believe recognition is in order here. It took us a decade, but we finally have an ordinance with teeth and substance. I fully expect other coastal cities to quickly follow our leadership. Yeah, I want to echo Miriam's points regarding, you know, a potential referendum that's in the works. There really is quite a bit of noise out there, a lot of fear-mongering. It sounds like there's going to be, you know, a petition that's going to be signed at grocery stores and things like that. And, you know, I would just ask the city to get the facts out. I think you've got an amazing job up to, up to date in terms of letting people know what the ordinance is all about and making sure that they're educated, and I would just ask that you continue to do so, so that people are informed and they don't end up signing something that they don't really understand. Thanks.
Thank you for your comments. Shavy Atkinson, followed by Deanna Slocum, and then Richard Gardner. Shavy Atkinson is not here. Okay, thank you.
Good evening. Deanna Slocum from Capo Beach. I too just want to say thank you for the ordinance and for the work that you did on September 6th. I realize now what a tough decision that was, because we're watching social media and it's exploding, and some of the comments relating to the honorable city council members as well as city staff are quite disheartening to read. So I wanted to go over one of the areas where there's misinformation that is easily correctable, and I think it could sort of squash the conspiracy theories that are out there. So we're hearing from the group that lost on September 6th that they felt that they got cheated. They feel they got cheated because they claimed the meeting date was moved and that the city only notified the short-term resident permit holders. That's why we came out in such strong force. So essentially, there was a conspiracy by city employees and city council members to cheat those opposed to the ordinance of due process and the right to be heard. Apparently, they neglected to read the headline of the newspaper article they criticized leading up to the meeting, the one entitled "Short-Term Rentals to Be Discussed at September 6th Council Meeting." It was very large. It was published in the Dana Point Times on August 18th. They claim that short-term, they also claim that short-term rental holders received a special notification of the meeting, which, again, was not extended to other members of the public. Well, that actually would have been appropriate if it were true. You see, as a permit holder, I would hope the city would have given me some, some advance notice of a meeting to discuss the future of my permit. But alas, I've asked around, and yet I can't find a permit holder who received such a notice. In addition, the claims, the additional claims that the residents made of or are making is that they were not made aware of the ordinance or its provisions, and that's just patently ridiculous and false. This has been a topic of discussion, as you well know, for over a decade. There have been people involved in crafting this ordinance long before many of those who are complaining about it ever lived here, and at no time was the process closed or restricted to a select, a select few. And in fact, as Miriam pointed out, a member of a key leadership position in the opposition has recommended as, as recently as March, this ordinance to a member of the San Clemente community as being a model ordinance and one that that city should look into. So our question is, what's changed? What's changed in six short months? It feels like there's something else going on. It feels like they're trying to get people to sign a petition to repeal an ordinance under false pretenses. And so some education from the city on the city's website would be very welcome at this time. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Final speaker this evening is Richard Gardner.
Good evening.
Good evening, city council, staff, and public. I'm Richard Gardner, and I'm taking this opportunity to introduce myself as a candidate for the Municipal Water District of Orange County, Division VII. Now, many of you may not even know what that is, but I want to assure you that it may be one of the most important assignments or political positions in the water business from South Orange County. We have been very lucky to have our own Sue Himmann serve in that role since right around 2000, or I believe 2000, 2002, when the Coastal Municipal Water District was dissolved into the Orange County, the Municipal Water District of Orange County. And then we had a representative, and it was divided into seven divisions. It's very important. It's the wholesale agency that provides drinking water to all of the retail agencies. I don't know all of the numbers, but I would say in the several hundred thousand, maybe as much as a half a million people in all of Orange County. So, of all of the districts and cities that are served from the Municipal Water District of Orange County, we're looking at about 27 of them. So, and each one of those has tens of thousands, if not as many as 60, 80, 100,000 customers. So, it's a very large and a very important position, and I felt that I could serve in Division VII as a representative of South County because I've been so involved in water now for over 20 years. I've attended all kinds of meetings. I drive to meetings. I go to the MODOC meetings in Fountain Valley. I attend the meetings in San Juan Capistrano. And just as an aside, I'll just say that, in this case, San Juan Capistrano strongly envies Dana Point. And they've even said it at their city council meetings, like Laguna Niguel. How come we have a water district? Why do we have to raise rapes? Why do we have to deal with this? Dana Point doesn't have to, but Dana Point has a good working relationship with South Coast Water District. Same with the city of Laguna Niguel, works with Moulton-Niguel Water District. So, I hope to be able to serve you at Municipal Water District.
Thank you for your comments. We have no more public speakers. There is no unfinished business items this evening, nor is there any new business items as well. Staff reports. Mr. Shokkavy?
You know, Mayor Tomlinson, I just have a couple of brief things. You know, I have a 15-year-old son, and I keep telling him, don't always believe what you read on the internet. Perhaps I'm wrong. Maybe I should start reading the internet. But having said that, I would be remiss if I didn't thank staff. Rush Chilton, Brad, Ursula, Mark, Brian especially, Matt. We're bringing, we're coming to a close of our summer season. We have had a lot of great events, and I want to thank you guys in your staff. Dwayne, Admin Deputy, Ted, for what you do with the vacation rental. You guys work so hard, and you've created a great organization, and you guys are the best in the business, and I'm just very proud to be associated with each and every one of you. You do it better than anybody else. No city can compare to the team we have here, and as long as I'm here, I'm committed to you folks. So, thank you very much for everything you do as a resident, but more importantly, as your city manager. Thank you very much. That's all I have this evening, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Shokkavy. Mr. Munoz?
I have nothing this evening.
Okay, we'll move it to council. Councilmember Olivera.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd just like to thank those who expressed our comments during public comments section, and I appreciate your comments. And I'll turn my meeting minutes into the clerk later.
Member Schoeffel.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just wanted to mention that on October the 16th, and I know we have another meeting before then, we are going to have another lovely art walk on Del Prado on Sunday to show off that beautiful street. And if it's anything like the last two, I think we're going to have a great community event there that should draw a lot of folks in and hope to see you all there. It's from 1:00 to 5:00 on October the 16th. That's all, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Miller.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to report that I attended the 9/11 ceremony down at Station 39, and it was just me, the firefighters, the battalion chief, and my kids. But it was a really interesting and pretty special event. They fly the flags at half-mast. They bring the equipment out into the street. We say the pledge, and there are speakers. And this is being done across the radio network for the fire authority and all over Orange County, all at the same time. Every station is doing this at the same time, unless, of course, they're out on a call, which 29 did get right before we got there. So, it's really a special event to commemorate what happened on 9/11 and our fallen public safety people at our residents. And I would highly recommend you try or go to one of these. It's a pretty somber event, but it really does help you reflect on what happened on that horrible day. That said, on October 2nd, we have an event going on in Dana Point called the, it's called Game Changers Music Gaming and Music Festival, and we're going to have some of the top gamers coming in from around the world to show the kids in the neighborhood, you know, how they do it and how they got into the industry. And it's really, really high-end bands coming as well. So, that's going to be happening over at Sea Terrace Park on October 2nd. I highly recommend you all showing up. It's the first one we're going to be doing, and hopefully it'll become an annual event. And I will turn my meetings into the clerk. Thanks.
Mayor Protam. Big Sorek.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have nothing to report. I will turn in my list of meetings to the clerk after the meeting. Thank you.
My turn. I don't have anything to report either this evening. I will turn in my list of meetings to the clerk as well. Thank you. Thank you all for coming this evening. We are hereby adjourned.